It all me.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our town hall here on Monday, March 1st. Again, I'm Chris Hankey. I'm the superintendent of schools. I'm going to introduce everybody in the boxes here that are around me the way they're 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 on my so just give away when I say when I when I call your name is Sherri Bailey, Director of Technologies here. Leanne Rysland, our Director of Teaching and Learning is here. Brooke Pilots, our Director of Special Education. Sean Patton, Assistant Superintendent. Al Saluka, our Treasurer CFO, Director of Business Services. And Gordon Dupree, Director of Pupil Services. We're here tonight to just talk about the hybrid return to learning, in-person learning that's going to happen next Monday. And we want to go over some information and just remind people that we we think we've designed a very good safe program for students to return to, and we're really excited to see our students back in person. For the first time in in some time. We do have some some information that we do want to get across. I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Saluka. He's going to talk about food service and transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Hankey. Since the time that we talked about students returning to school, we had a plan in place of just what that would look like, especially with transportation and food service. And as we've been moving that date back and trying to see who is coming to school and who is actually wanting to stay out in the BDA or even the the C group, we have once again pivoted a little bit and adjusted to the way we were doing things and the way we want to do things. And I think where the first area is food service. That we were going to have students eat lunch in the classrooms. We have pivoted from that, but let me just say, as your student enters the building, they will be for breakfast first. They will be getting breakfast and taking their classroom. For parents who are watching or parents that want to see this, all students in our district receive a free breakfast and receive a free lunch. So they do not have to worry about not getting a breakfast or getting a lunch. The menu is going to be limited in the beginning, but as we get through the process, we will expand our menu. We just want to get the first few weeks under our belt. So they will be getting a lunch that will be passed or a breakfast that'll be given to them as they enter the building, take their classroom to eat. What we first thought we were going to have lunch in the classroom, we have now pivoted that the base of the number of students and we are now going to have our students in the the K eight eat in the cafeteria. With the new CDC guidelines and the three feet social distance, especially in the elementarys, what we're going to be doing is rather than have everyone eat in the cafeteria area, we are going to split that up and put tables in the cafeteria and in the gym. So they will be able to come down, get in line, get their food, and then take it either to the assigned table in the cafeteria or the assigned table in the gym. This does two things. One is it allows for more social distance while they're eating food so they can take off their mask and have more of an area to eat in. Two, it it actually helps the student get out of their classroom, stretch their legs, be able to walk down to the cafeteria, get their food. Walk to a table, be able to eat and then head out to recess or whatever activities is right after lunch. The same principle was going to be for the middle school. What we're going to do is have them go down, get their food and then take it to their classroom and eat. Right now, though, we have the way the schedule is looking and the number of students returning. We have enough space in our cafeteria at the middle school so we can social distance our students in that exact room. Keep in mind, all of our buildings have been with their have been equipped with air purifiers and movement of air, especially in the cafeteria at the middle school, which is a bigger room. And especially in the gyms and the cafeterias, the gym spaces is ideal space. It's not real confined. So we think this is the best way to go. So we're pivoting again and let the students eat down in the cafeteria or gym, maintain that three feet of social distance. We've also pivoted a little bit for those that are on a digital academy or the group Z or group C, the Zoom classroom. Pickups will still be on Wednesday. You'll be picking up food from the high school only. You do not have to go to your child's child's building. You'll be picking up food. This is just group C only. And the BDA, you will be picking up your food from the high school. You will be getting a five day meal on that day on Wednesday, the asynchronous day. So we still have the signups. We are going to be putting out on the website, we will putting out the change to the meal service. There are new handouts for the hybrid learners. And virtual learners. So we will still be going to there. You still will be having to sign up to receive your food and put yourself in the in that line to make sure. And the reason we do this like anything is because we don't want it. We have to be able to have an idea of what we're going to prepare each Wednesday. Now, for those in the hybrid, we will still have pickups or not still, but we will have pickups on Wednesday only. You will be picking up your food from your child's building on Wednesday. You do need to sign up again, please. We will have this up on the website starting tomorrow morning. It'll be curbside and on that day for both groups, both the A and B group, you'll be receiving a three day meal. Because two days will be in the classroom eating and a three day meal. I understand. And the reason we're not sending meals home with the A group on Tuesday is for food safety, carrying it on a bus, carrying three day meals. Making sure it gets home, the little ones. So we just don't want to do that. So we're that's why we're doing the curbside pickup for the hybrid. I get that the Thursday, Friday, you're actually going to be getting meals and then on Wednesday, you're going to still get three day meals. It just we still want to ensure that you have five days worth of meals for both the hybrid group and for the BDA and group C. So those we're going to ask you to still sign up. It'll be on the website. It'll be going out tomorrow. And just look for that. And if you have any questions, please send us an email and we'll be able to answer those. Now, on the on the other side, transportation. We're still looking at the final numbers. Once again, due to capacity, we needed to move out our routes to the two mile limit. We are getting those final routes out now. I I understand that some of you have lost transportation who were at the 1.5 to two mile limit. There it couldn't be helped with the limited bus space. What was once an 84 passenger bus is now down to 27 for CDC, social distancing and guidelines. But what we are doing right now is that we have put, we've already identified those that are two miles and out. We are identifying that that group of individuals that are a mile and a half out to two miles and we're looking to see from the group A, group B, if there's any wiggle room to even lower that depending on what building you're at. The three buildings that are are hit hardest and I and once again, I apologize. It's just due to capacity, the number of bus drivers we have and the number of buses. If that gets relaxed a little bit, we could revisit. But right now, the three buildings that are really getting hit the most are Elmwood, Maple Leaf and the middle school. Elmwood, unfortunately, everybody is below two miles. So there will be no busting to Elmwood. As far as Maple Leaf, two miles and out. We are looking to see depending on the capacity of the bus and how many are riding who are in group C, group A, group B, how many are riding? If we could lower that down just a little bit to the maybe 1.8, 1.9 miles. It I get it. It's not fair that some are like Elmwood, you're probably 1.6. And we're looking at 1.9, 1.8, but the the routes that people are traveling to the high or to Maple Leaf and middle school are a little bit longer. The 1.5, 1.6, we're trying to lower it down, maybe the 1.9, 1.8. Is it the three mile limit? No, it's not. Or two mile limit, I'm sorry. The two mile limit, no, but if we can get as many students on the bus with our capacity, we will do that. So those are going to be going out to the final routes will be going out tomorrow. And looking for those stops and looking for those addresses. If you have any questions, please contact our transportation department, contact me. Contact your building principal and we'll look into it. We did do extensive work on this area as far as routing the mileage from our residency and our students and breaking that down to where we could get the most students on our buses. If something changes and CDC or the ODE relaxes their distancing on buses, we will immediately make that chain change and offer it out to the students who have were at the 1.5. So that's where we're at right now with our transportation. It still should be finalized by tomorrow. The final routes will be up on our website with addresses. And and if you, like you said, if you have a question of whether you're eligible, not eligible, where you're at, please contact your building principal or the transportation department or myself and we will look into it and let you know. That's where we're at, Mr. Hankey. And like I say, it's a work in progress. We're trying to do a pivot with what we got, the latest information. And we're trying to help the as as many students as we can to get to school on Monday.
Thanks, Mr. Saluka. I did see a question Mrs. Bailey put in from the chat. Who should we contact if we are unsure which group our children are in? Contact your buildings, right? Mrs. Rysland, the principal and and the buildings and they will help you. Generally, you know, we've kept it to alphabet, but there's been some adjustments based on class sizes and family groups and things of that nature. So please make sure you're contacting your your building and you know, this is really, it's like the first day of school with all the excitement and some anxiety that we're coming up on. And I wanted to go to Mr. Patton, who was really taking the lead on our PBIS initiatives and also kind of some of the COVID communication you've seen on our website. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. Hankey. As we are, as Mr. Hankey just stated, we are super excited to welcome everybody back and we look forward to welcoming our students. This is actually kind of like a little Christmas present in the middle of the school year for all of us. And so we're looking forward to welcoming you all back to school, seeing you. We will be in the buildings all next week as well. And so it's a it's a good thing for everybody. And so we again, welcoming everybody coming back. So as we are preparing, we have been working with the building principals. We know that our school and our students really need to learn what school is like. And so for the next few weeks, when they welcome back into school, we are focused heavily on our PBIS. And that means that we are going to be continuing to be practicing our routines, our procedures and how that looks like for welcoming our students back in the buildings. We know that academics is extremely important, but as a district, we've been recognized for our PBIS work and that includes all five buildings. And why we get the rewards the last several years is because we continue to revisit. We look at student data and we also know that the processes that we have in place and the establishment, the routines are extremely important. But unfortunately, with our students being out of school for almost a year, we need to really teach our students and this goes all the way from our kindergartners to our 12th graders, what school really looks like. And so the first few weeks of school, when we welcome everybody back, that's what we were going to be doing. It's practicing what school is like. Again, we have put a lot of measures into place to ensure safety. We know that it's extremely important that we practice as much social distancing as possible. We want to make sure that our students every day when they come back in, they have to have masks on and that is non-negotiable. The only time that they are not to have masks on is when they're eating. And as soon as they are done eating, they have to have their mask on immediately. We need to continue to practicing our hand washing and then and again, our social distancing. But in order for us to do that in the school, we have to practice that. And again, we have this established in these processes, in routines in place when we welcome our students back. The other kind of component that I've been really focusing on the last year is really our COVID protocols as well as making sure that we are keeping track of that. What we've done is I have been in constant contact actually with the Board of Health and received a phone call today with our point person checking in on where we are at. These last several weeks, we've had a downturn, which is a great thing. Many of our students and staff members have not been reporting that they have tested positive and that is awesome. And we hope to continue to have those numbers continue to go down. But if the case, we are made aware of that. What are the processes in places to contact the Board of Health? I actually email them once a week or daily if we need to. If there's questions, we have a contact person that I immediately call and have her direct line. And we're able to answer questions and then report out to the community as well as the family. The other thing is, as as we get made aware of this, we report everything into the Board of Health so that they are able to continue to do contact tracing. They may reach out to families following up on that. So we do provide a phone number for those families or for those both staff members as well as students if they do test positive in there. And again, if any questions, family in the community could always reach out to me at any time and I'd be happy to answer those questions. So as we stated before, we are very, very excited to welcome everybody back. We know that again, the things that we have in the systems and we have in place are going to ensure a smooth transition. But also know when your students are coming back to you, they maybe were saying they, hey, we were practicing walking in the hallways or we're practicing what the procedures are or washing your hands. Again, these are all systems in place that we have to ensure that our students are practicing the proper procedures from the Department of Health as well as the CDC. And again, again, welcoming our students back and ensuring that we are following these protocols is utmost important for our staff and students going forward.
Thanks, Mr. Patton. I appreciate that. As as we go around, Mrs. Bailey, do you mind just giving a reminder about Chromebooks and and procedures as as the students come in? That'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. So as everyone has said, we're super excited to have everyone back at school. And now all of you have Chromebooks. And because we're going to be in a hybrid model, those Chromebooks are going to have to come back to school with you because you'll be doing work on them as well as going home. So really, one of the main things that we're going to focus on is just in the evening, when you're done doing any of your schoolwork, plug in your Chromebook, make sure it's charged, you can bring it to school the next day. We're putting a plan in place that if you have any hardware issues, there'll be a point person for you to go and talk to at school, maybe get a loner device. But really, you'll be using those devices at home and at school. So that'll be part of your new routine to make sure that you put it in your book bag, your your backpack, whatever you're using. And make sure you take it to school and you'll be bringing it home with you at the end of the day. And then when you are not in school, you'll be using that to connect your class as well. So we look forward to seeing everyone and we hope that we're answering all of your questions. There are a couple of people who have who have put some questions in the chat. I'm going to type another one here for the group. So for those of you watching, if you have more questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And we'll just look forward to seeing you all on Monday.
Yeah, and I would like to give an update. One of the reasons we did have to, as as Mr. Saluka said, we do pivot when we had to. We've had to a lot this past year. All the staff, well, not all the staff, excuse me, the the staff that has elected to get the vaccine are getting their second dose on Wednesday. And on Thursday, we will be having a calamity day, just like a snow day. So there won't be any work posted. And the reason for that is is we're quite concerned about any reactions the staff might have because they they a lot of the a lot of the guidance who said that there might be a reaction in terms of, you know, for for about a day or so. So we're hopeful that only happens to a minimal amount of people, but we are being cautious with that. That's why we wanted to push the in-person to March 8. I think I'll throw this to Mrs. Rysland. Do we know what class size will look like when students are in person?
Yeah, class sizes are going to vary really depending on the building and the courses in which your students are enrolled. Some of our buildings by nature are smaller. Elmwood's our smallest elementary school. So just because they have a small enrollment to begin with, they are going to have some pretty small classes moving forward with the hybrid. And, you know, moving through the buildings, some classes in the middle school, a little bit larger, same thing at the high school, individual courses, some of them are a little bit larger than others. So there is no hard and fast rule saying, you know, that there's going to be 10 kids in a room or 12 kids in a room. We are keep maintaining the three to six foot social distancing within classrooms. And with this hybrid model, we're fairly comfortable with the numbers in place right now. We've got about half of our students are still going to be online between the BDA and the concurrent learning model. So when at any one time, really only a quarter of our students will be in the buildings, present face to face. So we're pretty comfortable with those numbers and we think that it will, you know, everyone will be comfortable with where we're at.
Thanks, Mrs. Rysland. I'll take the next one. Do we know how the classes will be set up? Well, the classes are going to be set up with our with our hybrid and concurrent learning model where students will be divided into two groups. One group attending Monday and Tuesday with an asynchronous day and the the next group attending Thursday, Friday. Those that are at home are able are going to be able to zoom into their classes. So you'll be able to access your classes in person during that time. We're going to maintain this hybrid model. Not for the foreseeable future, but definitely late into the spring. We would love to get try to get back full time by the before the end of the school year, but I'm not quite certain that we're going to get that type of guidance from the Board of Health or from the Department of Health. That's going to allow us to do that. So our hope, we're hopeful that this will that this will you know, give us a chance to get our in-person learning started and and then we'll go from there based on the guidance that we receive. As Mr. as Mr. Patton said, we will also keep everybody very well informed if we do have a a COVID issue that has to do with quarantine or anything like that, we'll make sure that everyone's very well informed and anybody that's affected will will be will will be notified. Masks are very important, super important for everybody, staff, kids and everybody. And I think that's going to keep us all safe. Next question, Mrs. Bailey is when will we find out what children were accepted for the BDA? Oh, like for, I I think that question, well, let me let me answer the BDA question just generally. Those in the Bulldog Digital Academy were given the opportunity to re-enroll for the second semester and we asked them for a semester commitment. And then there were those that we we put out for, oh, I see, for virtual learning. So those that have are not in the BDA, but have opted for complete virtual learning that will be notified by their principals and their buildings, I believe, Mrs. Rysland. Is that correct? Okay, very good. So so the BD, there is a difference there. The Bulldog Digital Academy is going to remain as it is through the balance of the year for those that have signed up and those that are in that C digital only group will be able to zoom into their classes live. So we hope that that that's again, going to be fruitful in terms of being able to start in-person learning. And we'll go from there. Another question, will there be partitions in the classroom? Well, I can speak to this. We don't have partitions or shields in the classroom. However, what we do have is the three to six foot social distancing that is recommended by the Cuyahoga County Board of Health. And that along with mask should help us keep everybody safe. And and based on their guidance, that that also alleviates some of the all-class quarantine rules if there if there does happen to be an issue. We only have to look at direct contacts. So that's going to be helpful. Will those things virtual be contacted this week? I don't want to make assumptions with Mrs. Rysland. I believe that that's going to be the case.
Yeah, I think most people, they've been working on it. So I think that we could make that assumption. The for the most part, if you signed up to be virtual, then you can be virtual. You don't need to wait to hear like for an acceptance. That group C form that you may have filled out last month, that signs you up. And so principals have that information. They've been, you know, working their groups, their As and Bs to make sure that they've got, you know, kids in place. That group C is going to be zooming in to the classroom. So there's not a need for a major schedule change. And yes, you should be hearing from them relatively soon. Some buildings sent on mail like through the, you know, post office mail. Some were making individual personalized calls. Some sent emails. So I know that there's been a variety of ways that the buildings have been contacting parents. So just hang tight. You'll hear soon.
Lockers. That's a good question. That's really for the middle and and high school. I don't want to speak out of term, but I believe the middle school is looking to assign every other locker. And Mr. Patton's nodding, so I'm not giving false information, which is good. And I believe, yeah, I believe the high school is not assigning lockers. So yes, unfortunately, you will have to bring your things to each class with the weather getting more and more hopeful that, you know, the coats, the coats won't have to be you know, carted along for too much longer. But again, you know, they're they're trying to design their their specific situations based on the school. And you know, mainly just trying to keep everybody safe. For for that, you know, as we move forward, if you know, things may change, you know, you might be able to get a locker as things get a little bit. The restrictions loosen a little bit and we do see that we do see that infection rates are 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 going down. And that's what we're hopeful for. And and as we move through this process, as we've done this past year, you know, we could be making some changes, hopefully based on loosening of restrictions. That's what we're hopeful for. We have planned, though, if there if there is contingency and we do have the 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 ability, if we need to pivot to a remote for a classroom or 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 for any one person, obviously, that we can. So but our hope is is that things do stay status quo. Let me look at some other questions here. Will the students thing virtual be included in classroom activities or are they on their own? No, they will be included in classroom activities. We'll we'll we don't, we won't exclude them as much as we can. Obviously, it's a little different. But you know, as as the teachers have activities, we'll include them. Just in fact, today I was actually, it's Right to Read Week. I was reading to a class virtually. And you know, every student would be able to participate that whether they were in person or virtual. So you want to make sure that we're as inclusive as possible. You know, with with the limitations we have because, you know, we do have video and folks in person. Do you want to say while 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 we're talking, spring sports are are starting and some of our winter sports are wrapping up. We did we we so those, you know, the good thing about spring sports is most of them are outside. I think all of them are outside. So that that's helpful in terms of COVID and our winter sports have wrapped up with very few issues, very, very few issues and 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 we're hopeful that it keeps it 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 keeps on that way. And we're we're excited that, you know, we didn't have spring sports last year. We're excited that the students are going to have the opportunity for those. Another question, what about special education students? Well, I'll throw that to Mrs. Pilots to talk about that.
Okay, thank you. We are so excited, as everybody has said, to have everybody back next week. We've been waiting, waiting patiently, but we're excited. So since every child's IEP is different, I cannot make a blanket statement about special education. So if you have any questions about your students' IEP, please reach out to their intervention specialist. And hopefully they can answer your questions that you have. If they cannot, then please call my office at the Board of Education and I can answer the questions for you. But since everybody's different, I just I can't put out a blanket statement about special education students. It's all individually based. But we're ready and excited to go.
We can say that students are, you know, coming back four days a week. There are some class, some settings in special education that are a little different, but parents have been contacted for that piece, correct?
Right. Those are specific classrooms, low incidence classrooms and preschool. So those the parents have already been contacted. You are correct.
Very good. All right. Looks like, I mean, are we caught up on questions, Mrs. Bailey? Do you, Mrs. Bailey, do you want to show the one of the videos we we featured on our on our site since we have a little time here? Then we can wait to see if other people ask questions. We we have, we've got a number of videos that we produce, these Together Safely videos. And if you haven't seen them, they're they're very well done. And they kind of go through, each building has one. So you can go to the building portion of the website and and have a look at these these videos. And I think Mrs. Bailey is going to queue one up here for us. And I think Mrs. Bailey's going to queue one up here for us. And you, you can have a look at it. These are, these are, you know, these were done to try to get folks to kind of look, look at how the, how everything's going to go.
Mr. Hanky, did you want the video that we were talking about initially?
Yes, please. Thank you. Trying to think of, another thing we, we do want to think about as we, as we process through is again, and I can't reiterate this enough, if, if we want to keep things, you know, going in a good direction, mask is very important. And, but we will, and we will provide masks if you forget, but we encourage everyone to bring mask every day. So, because if we use them and we use them appropriately, you know, we won't, we won't have, we'll keep, we'll be able to keep everybody safe.
Okay, here we go.
Mrs. Bailey, unfortunately, there's no volume on the videos that we're playing.
Well, thank you for letting me know that.
Yeah, that's okay.
I thought it was just me. Sorry.
Yeah, so did I. Sorry, Mrs. Bailey.
I thought it was just me with my technology piece.
Okay, would you like me to replay it?
That'd be great. Yes.
Okay, I can do that.
And to those staff members that are letting us know, we appreciate that, too.
Thank you. Let me stop sharing for one moment, and I will share it again.
You know, Mrs. Bailey's cueing this up, Mr. Hanky. If I could just throw in there, you're seeing some of the staff members that are cleaning these rooms, they're actually using an electrostatic sprayer where the chemicals kill the, has been proven that the chemicals kill the COVID. It is a five-minute spray where you just keep it on for five minutes and it dissipates. And the beauty of our sprayers is that it is safe to even eat off that surface after five minutes. So we have those, and we also have pump sprayers, the same thing in the buses, too. It allows us to go around and spray everything down after each run and wipe down. So we take our cleaning with this COVID very seriously. And, and to reiterate, while we don't have shields in the classroom, we will have hand sanitizer. We, every classroom has hand sanitizer, and every classroom has the spray in a bottle and for wiping down desks after each use. So once again, we're taking every precaution to keep our students safe during the school day.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Saluka and Mrs. Bailey. Ready to go?
Bulldogs, temperatures somewhat warm this week, giving us hope that spring could be in the not-so-distant future. With that hope comes the anticipation of our awaited return to school on Monday, March 8. By now, you have undoubtedly received information from your building principals, and you will continue to see more in the coming days.
Sherry, Sherry, that's, is a share to the screen. No video.
And now you can hear it, no video. Gotcha. Love technology. All right, I apologize. Okay, well, maybe Gordon would like to talk for a moment here while I get this set up to shared correctly.
Absolutely, is, is, we've preached all year patience and creativity and flexibility. Mr. Patton's words here. Dr. Dupree, if you could, you can share a little bit about social service, maybe give a plug to your upcoming town hall, too.
Sure, well, Mr. Hanky, parents and community members, you can see from the faces on the screen here that we're very excited about the kids coming back on Monday. We haven't seen kids in school in a year, if you're thinking about it. And what we want to let you know is that on Sunday night, or actually all weekend, tell your kids to relax, to look forward to seeing their friends. Parents, make sure they get a good night's sleep the night before school starts, and talk to them about all the positive things that are going to happen when they return. In addition to teachers, we have guidance counselors, social workers, intervention specialists, all staff who are on point to make your child's return to school successful and happy. Thank you, Mr. Hanky.
Thanks, Dr. Dupree. All right, Mrs. Bailey, take three. You ready? Okay.
Greetings, Bulldogs. Temperatures somewhat warm this week, giving us hope that spring could be in the not-so-distant future. With that hope comes the anticipation of our awaited return to school on Monday, March 8. By now, you have undoubtedly received information from your building principals, and you will continue to see more in the coming days. Please stay on the lookout for important information. Parents and students can take great comfort knowing that the Garfield Heights City Schools have taken extra and special precautions to prepare for the safety of students returning to the buildings. Our awesome building maintenance staff has deeply cleansed the buildings. We have installed various thermal imaging, ionization, and temperature-taking technology. The district has worked to improve and enhance airflow efficiencies in all of the classrooms and throughout the buildings. Shared and commonly touched surfaces will constantly be sanitized. Despite all of these safety precautions, if your student is sick or does not feel well, please keep him or her home out of an abundance of caution. Together, we will return to school safely. Thank you for your help. Also, please mark your school calendars for Thursday, March 4th, as it will be a calamity day in our district, and there will be no learning for students due to the fact that staff members are receiving the second dose of the vaccine the day before. Once again, Thursday, March 4th will be a calamity day in our district, and there will be no school for students. Finally, this coming Monday, March 1st, I will be hosting my next town hall meeting at 6:00 PM. Please tune in on the district's YouTube channel to participate. Have a great day and go Bulldogs.
Thanks, Mrs. Bailey. And that, that was, yeah, that was my video from Friday, and it did show some of our cleaning efforts. And again, I encourage everybody to go on their, their homeschool's website and watch our Together Safely video series. Mrs. Bailey, do we have any other questions popping up? Okay. And we will answer those and we'll move forward. You know, and every Friday, we do, I do try to put out a video. Oh, this is probably for Mrs. Pillars.
Yes, there have been some students, as I mentioned earlier, low incidence classrooms and preschool that, that have been attending on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So their schedule will change. They're going to four days a week, but reach out to your intervention specialist if you have any questions, or you can call me, because this is only for a specific group of students that are attending those four days.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Mrs. Bailey? Yep, okay.
Chris, I see a Music Express question, having some kind of show.
Yeah, very good. So I worked with Ms. Hager, and what we, what our plan is, is to try to re, not try, we're going to restart Music Express next week. Mr. Parnad should be in touch. We are looking at, they, excuse me, they, not, we, the, Mr. Parnad is looking at doing, possibly doing some sort of a show for the year. It won't be as full as, as, as our normal show. But the big thing is, though, is we're going to start practicing. And then we're going to go from there. I should also mention, though, the band is also going to restart some activity. And, and drama is, you know, is a course, so that'll restart some activity. But, but yes, we are, we, Ms. Hager and Mr. Parnad are working on restarting Music Express and possibly doing something this spring. Okay. Well, you know, I'd like to thank everybody for watching. You know, our team, this is, this is my team here at the central office minus a few folks. There are some other people at the central office that have been working hard on this plan. I'd like to thank all of them because they, you know, a lot of the times, you don't necessarily see these folks out front as much as you do principals and building administrators. I also would like to thank the building administrators as well, though. Everybody's been planning very hard, and, and obviously the teachers. We are so looking forward to all of you on, on Monday, and we, you know, you should see us around. We're, we're going to be getting pictures and video and things of that nature. Oh, we have one more question, school drama practice. I believe that that is kind of up in the air, but drama, drama's a class, correct, Mrs.? No, it's not happening? Okay.
So I mean, all of these classes that you just talked about, you know, choir, Music Express Band, Drama, they are classes. They will meet throughout the day with the students. They will follow their schedule, and they will attend these classes. But there's a couple of things that we have to consider with these. You know, we are, again, only going to have a fraction of the kids in on any given day. So it makes putting together full-blown performances quite difficult. We also talked, Mr. Patton talked earlier in the meeting about spending these next couple of weeks really sort of reintegrating into school and school, you know, processes and protocols. So there is going to be a little bit of a learning curve here these next few weeks. And then we're going to, you know, kind of see where we are with these classes. They will move forward as classes. And so the activities that teachers do in class absolutely will still occur. Kids will have the opportunity, you know, to go to drama class and act out through their classroom. But to say that there would be a performance or some sort of show at the end of the year, I think that might be pushing it a little bit. Simply because of time, the time constraints, it's all about the time.
Yeah, thanks, Mrs. Risen, for keeping me on point. I know that they are working to get something done, especially with Express. But yeah, there's, there's going to be some challenges there. So again, I'd like to thank everybody for tuning in. I'd like to thank everybody, parents, all of our staff, everybody for, for hanging in there. And, you know, and we're so happy to have the kids back on Monday. If you have any questions, you are certainly welcome to contact any of the folks here, me. Call me at the board office, email me. Your, your buildings are going to have a lot of pertinent information. Make sure you get in touch with them if you have questions. I'd like to thank, thank everybody, and we'll see our students on Monday. Thanks.